All right, it's 11:30. I'm going to convene the meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. I would like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. I had been given some very disturbing news about a veteran who came back from combat and after he had seen six of his fellow soldiers killed in an ambush, is now having significant readjustment problems, which is all part of the responsibility that we have to those folks who have served us. So please join me in a moment of silence what we think about him, about other veterans, other combat soldiers who are facing harm's way for our benefit. Thank you very much. Public comment is a voluntary thing at the beginning of every meeting. I am the Chair of the County Commissioners and it's my prerogative to allow public comment. I will only allow three minutes of public comment for those of you who wish to speak. At the end of three minutes, that is the end of your public comment. I will use a timing. Does anybody wish? Yes?
You don't start it until I start, right? Is this okay? Yes, I will. Commissioner Dougherty, Commissioner Lyons, Commissioner Flynn, ladies and gentlemen in attendance, and anyone at home. My name is Cindy Locke. I have lived in Brewster since Brewster's Special Permit Granting Authority, the Planning Board, conducted a public hearing to hear from both the applicant and concerned residents. After hours of testimony and more hours of deliberation, CEVAC was denied a special permit from the Planning Board. The Brewster Board of Selectmen wanted to give the voters, quote, "one more shot," unquote, at a town meeting vote to permit the turbines, quote, "by right," unquote. State law says that zoning bylaw changes must pass town meeting by two-thirds. It did not pass. Today, Brewster is obligated to follow the November 2007 town meeting mandate, a unanimous vote making the Planning Board Brewster's Special Permit Granting Authority and giving us the Special Permit Regulations for Wind Energy Conversion Turbines. CEVAC has stated that it will be asking the State Department of Public Utilities to exempt it from Brewster's local zoning bylaws and the Planning Board denial. Our Board of Selectmen has decided to once again overlook the town meeting mandate, bypass the Planning Board, and back CEVAC's petition to the state. If CEVAC is successful at the state, then appointed state officials and CEVAC will decide Brewster's wind project. Letting this happen makes the whole process we have been through, meetings, hearings, and town meeting votes dating back four years, meaningless. Letting this happen negates all the study, debate, and deliberation of the Cape Cod Commission and Assembly of Delegates in their efforts to establish minimum performance standards. Letting this happen has implications and consequences Cape-wide. Backing CEVAC's petition means that the Brewster Board of Selectmen is giving up on local autonomy, in effect choosing appointed state officials and CEVAC over the people of Brewster. I was asked a month ago, why am I attending so many county meetings? I said that I want to learn as much as possible about how the county government works, especially regarding the matter of regional oversight when it comes to industrial-sized turbines. I am a retired teacher and a lifelong learner through and through. The county hearings and meetings and printed goals and values are packed with respect for our Cape Cod environment and its people. The county hearings last for several days, if need be, so all could be heard. All the speakers were listened to, and for whatever they could offer to the conversation. There was no lecturing and condescending air detected.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Yes, I'd like to give my time back to the Speaker so she can complete hers, please.
Very well.
Everyone has a voice, and every voice is important. Basic premise in school in our country, right from our founding fathers. I became full of hope. The more county meetings I attended, the more inspired I became. Quote, "Keeping a special place special," unquote, was more than a mantra. It was a county belief of value I share. My attention today focuses on a chart that you have in the building that shows the structure of the agencies in our county government. I noticed that on this chart, the county commissioners and Assembly of Delegates are at the top. I noticed that the Cape Light Compact and CEVAC are four levels down at the bottom. I always thought that the higher the level in government, the higher the authority. People today will have comments and questions for the commissioners and Cape Light Compact. I hope that your stated goal for Cape Cod regional autonomy and regional oversight of large-scale development projects such as the industrial wind plant does not diminish in the face of pressure from any one agency, any one Cape Town, or the state. I respectfully request that you stop Cape Light Compact's funding to CEVAC for the petition to the Department of Public Utilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We have another eight minutes. Yes?
Thank you. Lily Green-Welfley, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here today to present facts and to entering this information into public record. There are approximately 50 people in Falmouth who are physically ill because they live too close to one wind turbine. Falmouth is not an anomaly. There are other turbines in Massachusetts, and people who live too close to these turbines have reported adverse health effects. They are the turbines near Jiminy Peak in the Berkshires, Newburyport, Woods Hole, Mass Maritime, and Hull. In fact, there have been people who have moved away from Hull due to the turbines. This complaint I recently received from a person too close to a Hull. That low-frequency repetitive noise is just aggravating. It's like a plane going by that just doesn't stop. The reflection of the spinning blades off many shiny surfaces also is very annoying. I work at home, so I find myself having to work in certain places in my house depending on how annoying it is at certain times. Furthermore, I personally conducted videotape interviews with over 25 people in several locations living too close to wind turbines in Australia and New Zealand this past winter. The people I spoke with all said they felt lied to by the wind developers and the wind industry. They said that the noise from the turbines is a big problem and that there are many different noises that are too loud. They are physically ill. Those living too close to Vestas V90 wind turbines, the same model as the Brewster Planning Board, voted not to grant a special permit for, experienced sleep deprivation, severe tension, had dangerously high blood pressure readings in the morning, and ringing in the ears. It was told to us that the Health Department in one town forced the wind developer to buy out the residents who lived 3,280 feet from the Vestas V90 wind turbine. We were told that the people living in the home were physically sick and that the vibrations inside the house made water on a windowsill shake so much it spilled over because homes can act as a resonance chamber. The people in these locations living too close to the wind turbines told us that the real estate doesn't sell. No one wants to buy the homes within miles of the turbines. We saw and photographed oil leaking from a turbine and thought about the implications for our single-source aquifer. We were told about raging fires that have burned many acres because of sparks fly when there is a turbine fire and the wind developer recommends letting them just burn. We thought about what a fire would do on Cape Cod. The democratic process has taken place in the town of Brewster. The Planning Board has reviewed countless pages of documents and has heard numerous hours of testimony. They considered the information akin to the material I present for the record today. The due process we all expect in our town and county has been followed. The Brewster Planning Board has denied the special permit for the project. I ask you to seriously consider the responsibility you have to the citizens of Barnstable County to uphold the rights of the citizens in the towns of this county, and I implore you to use every avenue available to stop CEVAC from filing with the DPU or to withdraw their application if they have already filed. With due respect, I ask you to take action today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have time for two more. Yes, Mr. Bill.
Well, maybe you'll have time for three. I'm going to be very brief. I gave you a series of resolutions at the last meeting, and I know that it was asking a lot, you know, for you to consider all of the various issues that have been raised, both in the letter and in the resolutions. And what I wanted to say, pure and simple, is I'd like to urge you to adopt all of those resolutions and to investigate these issues. But in the event that you feel that you don't have enough information today to do that, what I'd like to do is to urge you to at least impose a standstill, at least vote a resolution opposing any additional action on the DPU filing, which is a stated intention of CEVAC, or any expenditure of any of the monies given by CLC to CEVAC until you can address those issues. I think that would be a helpful first step, because time is of the essence.
Mr. Ellwood.
Just again, a quick comment. We've heard about the concerns that have been raised about health issues, but if you research the history of wind turbine technology, there has never, and I mean never, been a reported death or a serious injury as a result of a turbine malfunction. Again, not to say that people aren't going to be annoyed by these, but if you consider that fact with the history of the use of fossil fuels in this country and the thousands of people who die yearly as a result of that use, to me, there's no choice but to continue our efforts to develop renewable energy.
Mr. Gillis.
I didn't say a word, Ms. Green, when you got up to speak, so I would prefer you didn't make noises when I get up to speak. Okay? Thank you very much. Just a very short, not a speech, but just some short comments. Number one, there have been so many half-truths and outright lies that have been promulgated over the last few months by individuals in an attempt to short-circuit the process. They are correct. The Planning Board held a hearing. The Planning Board was the special granting permit authority. Doesn't mean that's the end of the world. They held a hearing. They really didn't do it properly because they didn't have a positive motion and then deny it in that way. They just had three people say, "I don't want conditions. I'm just denying it. I don't want them." So that's number one. Number two, what the Board of Selectmen did when we put that article together, Article Five on the special town meeting, was in order to save time and money and to see if the town, if we would get the zoning change by two-thirds vote, because that's what you have to get. We didn't get two-thirds vote. We got 64% of the vote. 64% of the voters at town meeting, or there were some 1,200 voters there, but somehow only 1,136 got counted. We got 725 yay, 411 no. The Board of Selectmen, the majority of the Board of Selectmen, looked at that and said, "We've got 64% of the people at town meeting who want the turbine project to move forward." Now, we also get phone calls and we also get letters for people who want this process to move forward. It is perfectly within CEVAC's legal right and our legal right to support CEVAC to go to DPU. It is not something that was done secretly. This was, comments were made when we first brought out Article Five and gave the public the chance to comment on that, and they commented on that. And we told them, depending on the vote, we might go to DPU. We think 64% is a margin and a majority of voters who want us to move forward on this turbine project. Most of what you hear is what may happen or what they think is going to happen. And nobody knows it's going to happen, and it hasn't happened in most places. We've gone to Portsmouth, we've gone to Hull, and between those two, we have one registered complaint, one registered complaint. Falmouth is not the standard. It is not the standard for all turbines. And frankly, I'm frustrated. I'm tired of having to spend all my time coming and doing this every three weeks, every six weeks, because there's a group that travels around the Cape, and they're against wind energy. And that's fine. That's their right. But I think we in Brewster, the Board of Selectmen, the elected Board of Selectmen, have the right to go to CEVAC and say, "We support your efforts." And if Paul wants to speak on the standards that were put together, it's not a fact that we did not meet those standards, because those standards can be standards that can be decided and can be mitigated in discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Sutter, you'll be the last one.
My name is Charles Sumner. I'm the town administrator for Brewster. The only thing I wanted to add is there was a citizen petition, Article Number 37, on our annual town meeting warrant. That article would have eliminated the Commerce Park site for consideration for wind turbines. That would have been an article that should have been debated by town meeting. If that article had been discussed, it would have taken away the authority of the Board of Selectmen to lease that land for wind turbines. The petitioners moved to indefinitely postpone that article. So in my mind, the Board of Selectmen, vested by town meeting, still have a right to pursue wind turbines at the Brewster Commerce Park. If the petitioners really wanted to see how the citizens felt about that project, they should have presented that article to town meeting floor. They didn't. They withdrew it. They indefinitely postponed it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That'll be the end of public comment. We should have to start our regular business. If you wish to participate in public comment, you should come to another meeting. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, which we got for the Conference of Economic Development Strategy update by Paul Edgewick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to be in front of you today.
Always good to see you, Paul.
I get tired, Paul. I've been out all night celebrating here.
I've not been celebrating.
Did your staff raise some of those things at the end? They were wonderful. We shouldn't be separated by differences, but joined by our mutual interest, I thought, Paul.
United by our common challenge.
Yes, yes. All united by our common challenge. I tried to quote you today, but the last part.
Do you want this moved so you can see it?
No, we can see it, yeah. But thank you. Move it if you'd like to see it, because...
No, I can see it.
Okay, good.
So this is the perfect timing to have this discussion because it comes at the close of a two-day economic summit that we had at Waukesha. I know that all three commissioners were there. Glad to see that. That was a great conference and an example of what we can do when groups that in the past haven't always agreed on things identify that we're all moving in the same direction. We've got different roles and responsibilities. It creates a certain synergy, and it was great to have that event and Congressman, the Governor, and everybody who showed up. It was a great thing, and I hope we can continue to do that. What we're going to discuss today is the SEDS document, Conference of Economic Development Strategy, which we are about to go through our second annual update of. And there are a couple of breakout sessions for particular SEDS projects at the conference, and we will be meeting with our five working groups over the next few weeks to sort of take some of what we, out of the conference, what we heard as it relates to the SEDS project, and to revamp and reprioritize some of these projects. You know, we listed 16 priority projects. We had five working groups. They each listed three. Open Cape was an overarching one, became the 16th program. The feds really liked the SEDS report when we turned it in. But of course, all of these projects don't necessarily move forward as quickly as you would like, and some run into roadblocks that are issues beyond our control. And so we have an opportunity every year to reprioritize, and that's what we're going to be doing now. So your input today will be very useful to that effort. So the Regional Policy Plan, as it relates to economic development goals, four of them, low-impact and compatible development, a balanced economy, regional income growth, and infrastructure capacity. And that's really what it's about. I mean, economic development, the traditional academic definition is to increase wealth in your community. And that's what we're trying to do here, and that's what this Regional Policy Plan really did when we established it about two and a half years ago now. So our Economic Development Actions, there is the SEDS document, the Cape Cod Conference of Economic Development Strategy, Economic Development Education, Infrastructure Financing, the Regional Cost of Doing Business Analysis, Regional Market Analysis, Demographic and Economic Data Clearinghouse, Fiscal Impact Modeling, Local and Regional Development Tools, Economic and Business Development Partnerships, Infrastructure Mapping and Hazard Mitigation Investments are all part of that Regional Policy Plan, Economic Development Actions. And we've been engaged in every one of those. So the SEDS specifically, why we're here today. What is SEDS? Well, it is both a process and a plan. And I think the SEDS as a plan, but more importantly as a process, really set up the economic summit that we saw yesterday because this was really a ground-up process. It's the regional planning agency's responsibility to draft the plan every five years. But when we did it two and a half years ago, we did it without any sort of top-down strategy at all. It was five working groups, get the community together, and it really was a process that was a grassroots-driven process that came up from the bottom. And I think that's why it's been successful. So the plan, work groups completed the plan, the SEDS plan, in April 2009, and the implementation is from 2009 to 2014. Some of these projects are certainly multi-year commitments. And I would add, just working with the Federal Economic Development Agency, the EDA, generally they take two to three years to get funding from EDA. So it's sort of a dance. They really like to get to know these individual projects. Evaluate, we do that annually, so this will be our second annual evaluation. And revise and resume, which is what we will do, what we did last year and what we will do again this year. So there were 61 representatives of regional organizations involved in the development of the plan, broken into five different working groups. So the SEDS process, you know, from many efforts around the Cape comes one plan, you know, e pluribus uno. So these are the five groups: workforce development, industry sector development, business development, business, climate, and infrastructure development. So all five of those working groups, made up of those 61 regional representatives, came up with three priority projects for the plan. That's what the plan looks like, very boring and bureaucratic, as you can tell, and distinguishable.
But it has the fish.
But it does have the fish. We did that just for you, Bill, so the fish is there. The Regional Policy Plan and the SEDS goals, again, low-impact development, incompatible development, balanced economy, regional income growth, but also regional collaboration and joint commitment. And that was really what was evidenced over the last two days at the conference at Waukesha. So SEDS and Regional Policy Plan implementation to date. Implementation begins as a five-year plan, which was adopted in June 2009. The EDA certification was granted in July 2009. So as slowly as the EDA generally works, they work very quickly on this report, and we've got very high marks. So the EDA implementation grant was awarded in May 2010. So that's the first money that we've ever received, that we've received from the plan, which is an initial $60,000 planning grant. And that's really funding an effort by the commission now to have the entire Cape designated as an economic development district, which means we will get federal money coming directly to the county on an annual basis once that designation is done. That designation should be completed this year. It's generally a two-year process. So Stats Cape Cod is data and information dissemination. This was a partnership between the Economic Development Council and the Cape Cod Commission. So to put these three areas together, which is Stats Cape Cod, which is a new website that we have up, and our website, and we've sort of been a beta testing for a new website for the county, should be up and running within 30 days. We're very close to the end now. Stats Cape Cod is a part of that. We actually worked with the state of Indiana, who has a Stats Indiana webpage, and they basically let us have all of their infrastructure for nothing. So another example of collaboration and partnership. And now you can get those economic benchmarks that are important to the local economy, important to local businesses, important to businesses that want to live here, important to local governments when they make decisions about economic development locally. That's up and running. The Reset Team, Town Technical Assistance, spent over 1,000 hours in Yarmouth and the Parker's River Bridge area, right in the center of Yarmouth on 28 last year. That has led to a plan, which is a good plan. We're currently working with, on the Parker's River Bridge in this combined way to expand the Parker's River Bridge, the culvert underneath there from 15 feet to 30 feet, which will increase the natural flushing of Swan Pond into the Parker's River, which has the benefit of remediating, hopefully remediating, some of the nitrogen, the nutrient loading issues there at a far less significant cost than sewer. So we're there. But also to make that bridge, to give Yarmouth on 28 sort of a center spot, because it's sort of, many times when you're on 28 in South Yarmouth now, you can't really tell which part of Yarmouth you're in. So this just creates a center, and there's a, the old drive-in parcel, which is to the south of that, is an area the town has wanted to develop as a marina for a long time. So we're very engaged. We had a meeting with Commissioner Kimmel last week, and we've been dealing with Lakeville on that issue. There are some permitting issues, but the commission is working with the town to get some of those permitting issues resolved so that that project can move forward.
If I, just ask this question, because when I was on the Cape Cod Commission, the concern was that the asphalt paving that was there required the restoration of the wetland by removing it. Has that issue been addressed?
Yeah, that's, the issue that remains now, Bill, is where they want to break in from the river to create and dig out and make the marina, has an area of wetland in front of it, even though that it sits on debris. You know, it is what it is. It's a very short segment, and so that's really where the focus of the discussion is now. If we could have the removal of some of that permitted, then this project could move forward. So that's the particular sticking block, roadblock that we're dealing with right now. And the other one are the 16 regional priority projects. So this partnership with the EDC encompasses all three aspects of this. It's the 16 regional priority projects, it's that data dissemination from Stats Cape Cod, and it's their ability to put five or six members of the Cape Cod Commission with different expertise in particular towns at a particular time to deal with a particular issue. We've done that in Yarmouth. We're getting ready to do that in Bourne, and Bourne is, there is a hotbed of activity for any number of reasons. We've got, you know, the Growth Incentives Zone in Buzzards Bay, and the National Marine Life Center is an important component of that. We've got a Green Tech Park that is up in the middle on the north side, which is, potentially factors into some of the discussions we've had with EPA about developing a marine-water technology cluster, which factors into and is related to the announcement that was made at the conference yesterday about our partnership with MBL and RTDC in the Woods Hole area. But there's also a land-use vision map that we're closing in on with Bourne on the south side, and we've got two very important businesses that need to expand on the south side. And so I also, I anticipate that with the adoption of a land-use vision map on the south side, will also come with raised thresholds for commission review in industrial service and trade areas that will allow both of these companies, one of them a Hui spin-off, and one of them sort of predicted by our second homeowner survey with two gentlemen that used to vacation next to each other. They retired here at 65, apparently were bad golfers, so they had nothing else to do except start a new business, which has been incredibly successful in turning household waste into pieces of bricks that can actually be burned in coal-fired plants in the Midwest. So both of those companies, very important to the Cape and important to keep in Bourne. And now that we have Chapter H and this flexibility, industrial service and trade areas, is an opportunity to do that. So...
It's a piece of Bourne that's very important to the Regional Transportation Authority, and that's the, you know, looking at that area for identifying, let's say, some type of significant parking. You know, that's all part of what I call holistically, part of the transportation, housing, and environmental protection.
The transportation issues in Bourne are frankly overwhelming because they involve both bridges. And as you know, Bill, we've been actively pursuing money to study the future of those bridges. We put that off too long. We're currently in conversations. We need about $300,000, I think, in order to perform that study adequately. But there are also those feeder roads on at least three of the landing sites around the existing bridges that have to be redesigned. And so we're in the process of looking at Belmont Circle may be included on the tip as a part of that project. So transportation infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, and getting a land-use development pattern that pushes growth into these economic centers is essentially important. It is incredibly important for a town like Bourne, who is so close to the edge on some of those municipal financing issues that they've got. They have to be able to stimulate their commercial tax base in order to not continue to shift that responsibility on the backs of residents. So that's what the Reset Team is about, and we've been very successful in working with towns. And, you know, you get the opportunity to work extensively in towns like that. Staff gets to build relationships with staff and elected boards, and you increase the level of trust, which increases the level of collaboration. And it's really been a very positive thing, both for the Cape Cod Commission and for, I think, some of the towns that we've been in. So we're moving forward in that direction. Implementation plan, oh, I went backwards. There we go. This is what we did in Yarmouth, did 28 analysis. It's a really long corridor. analysis. It's a really long corridor. And so we saw, we did natural resources and wetlands evaluation, historic preservation, economic development, transportation, wastewater, and regulatory constraints. So these were all identified as part of the process. We worked extensively with the, the Yarmouth Planning Board on this issue. And you can see in this area right here, there are, these are sort of three nodes that we're trying to, part of the plan here is to consolidate into nodes, close some curve cuts, improve the traffic flow. This is the Parker's River Bridge area with Swan Pond in the back of it. This is the marina parcel down here, the bridge. This is where the Yarmouth current proposed wastewater treatment facility would go. They'll increase the culvert flushing through there. And then some preliminary designs for a connection of these through a bike trail of sorts on the backside. So a really nice plan there. And we hope that we can get towards implementation on that sooner rather than later. This is Stats Cape Cod. So this is what the website looks like when you visit there. And then it's interactive now. And what we need to do moving forward is to take some of the local information that we have now and add value to this site. A lot of the data that's reflected here is data that's collected federally or collected on the state level. So they're collected in these big uniform chunks. And they don't always accurately reflect an area like the Cape that has a lower population density, isn't really rural, isn't really suburban, isn't really urban, but more importantly, doesn't reflect the seasonal nature of the economy in many respects. So we know that we can collect data and add value to that locally. And that's what we're in the process of doing.
Are you coordinating with the statistical collection that we're making over at the human, you know, with the human service department? I think, Christine, we have that thing with the woman over there that's doing that. You are in contact with her.
Yeah, we, we can coordinate that more than we have. I mean, we're still sort of building the website, but we would have capacity to do that. I'll make sure we touch base with her. And these are regional benchmarks. For example, business growth by size. This is an example of some of the information that we get on Stats Cape Cod. You know, most of our businesses are very small. And that's not, that's something that we know. And these are research. That's the second homeowner survey that we did jointly with the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. That predicts that, it looks at a lot of the second homeowners that we have. We have an extensive number of second homeowners on the Cape. Most of them have had over a 20-year relationship with the Cape. And it's predicted that many of them are, desire to retire here, which is, and so part of the survey goes through, well, what, what would you want when you, when you take that, when you make that transition? A lot of this, what we want, you know, broadband capacity and internet service. And so they, they tend to want the conveniences and the comforts of a, of a more urban area when, in order for them to make that transition going down. Again, that's a lot of what the conference was about yesterday, is building that capacity. Leveraging cultural assets, that's an arts and culture program that we did for the towns, that can, that gives them certain suggested paths when they're looking at redeveloping or revitalizing certain areas of how arts and culture can be an important component of that moving forward. So that's part of the read.
If I can just make a comment, both of those, the survey, the second homeowner survey is fascinating. But the leveraging cultural assets is an excellent document, very easy to read, very accessible. And I just really encourage people to take a look at it. It's really very well done.
Is it on the webpage?
It's on, I believe it's on the web.
Yeah, it's on the web. But it's, it's one of the documents that I'm closest to. I mean, a lot of it looks at some of the stuff that we did in Hyannis. But it, it also shows the way that we're moving forward, which it has a huge graphical interface. So it's tied to maps. It shows where all the arts and culture are, how many of them are near economic centers, what kind are near economic centers, what other kinds are on 6A. So it's a great example of the kind of work product that, that we do. And Kevin Howard, who's the new executive director of the Arts Foundation at Cape Cod, this is one of the first things that he read. And, and so he believes very much in using arts and culture for economic development on the Cape, and has, has referenced this report several times.
Anecdotally, I was approached by somebody from, who's involved with introducing an app, this is it, yesterday.
Yeah.
An app for the location of where you can buy, buy fresh, buy local.
Yes.
I'm really excited about that because one of the things that we're, you know, we're trying to make sure that people are aware of where these farmers markets are. So that app is, I guess, is coming in the summertime.
Yeah, we've, a lot of people are working on sort of similar projects along that. But I talked to Francie yesterday, too. And so we're going to try to help her find some money for that. The DLTA money, the Direct Local Technical Assistance money that we've had for the last two years, isn't in the House budget, may not be in the Senate budget. So it may not be available this year. If it were available, it'd be perfect to support that kind of application. On a parallel track, we have had discussions with IBM. They have this MOCOMAPs application, which is a very low cost sort of application that can do the same thing. But that is, is not the future. That's the, that will happen next year, one way or the other. And it will support the buy local, buy fresh programs, one of which is a SEDS project. And our partner in that is the Lower Cape Community Development Partnership that has done a lot of work on that. So we are definitely moving towards that. And my hope is that we'll have some announcement on that in a fall kind of timeframe about being able to use these person, these PDA applications in order to get people much more connected in their community. So that's very exciting.
Well, on the second homeowner study, wasn't a piece of that indicated that the people who own those second homes now and who are going to be moving here eventually, even though they may retire from whatever business they were, in which they were occupied, when they came here, they also wanted to continue to work in some fashion? Wasn't there some number or statistic?
There is a breakdown on that. And I don't want to guess at what it is, but I remember the particular section. And I will tell you that a lot of them don't want to work. They want to retire.
Quality of life.
Yeah. But it's, it's a split. There's a significant, given the size of the population, there's a significant component that do want to continue to work. But a lot of them expressed really no interest in that. Of course, they say that, and then they're going to get down here and find out that they too are bad golfers. And they're going to look to get involved in their communities. And I think that's what we see. And that's, that's been a, a strong point for the Cape to date. And I think we'll continue to, to provide a backbone as we move forward.
With the other, my other comment about the conference yesterday, and thinking about, almost every speaker talked about quality of life.
Yeah.
And that this whole thing about Cape Cod is that that's what it provides to people is this quality of life. And I'm thinking that with all of the changes with the internet in the last, what, 10 years, at least 10 years, that we are so loaded with information from every source imaginable, that you need that quality of life to be able to deal with all the information that's, that's there for you to see or read.
Well, I agree. And what you need is.
Remove yourself from.
Yes. That it's so important if you want.
But I think part of this is government is moving in this direction, too. There's so much information out there, that if there's not somebody who harnesses it and allows and can filter it in a way that it is user friendly to people that want to use it, they'll simply be overwhelmed by it. So that's, that's part of the Strategic Information Office that we're talking about. And in particular, I want to be able, I hope that Barnstable County can harness all of that information in a way that improves the quality of life and allows us to provide equal or higher services to the people that live here at a lower cost. And that's the real future of government. It surrounds information. I think regional government especially is, is the exact economy of scale that we need in order to be, to take that information and develop it in a way that is very useful to people that live here. So 17 regional priority projects, you can tell that we have Open Cape, and I might not talk about Open Cape because we've done that for two days. But we have renewable energy generation, renewable energy demand reduction, wastewater infrastructure in economic centers, renewable energy testing and training centers, the entrepreneur center, Cape Cod Fisheries Trust Program, the Community Green Enterprise Program, the Buy Local Infrastructure Development Program, which is, it ties into exactly what Francie's working on. Specialized four-year college, which I had an interesting session on yesterday. Coastal Use Templates for Economic Development, we've made a lot of progress there in a, in a GIS format. Redevelopment Authority, which the Business Roundtable is the lead agency on, starting to, to really become the umbrella of the discussion that we're having with the upper KPDICs and how we're going to use, how we need to, to amplify what they can do in order to promote the goals of the Regional Policy Plan. And the Development and Economic Centers, the Cost Analysis. Now, the three in yellow are three that we added last year. So that's, that's, this is an example of how we can update and what we do. So a Center of Excellence for Water Quality and a Regional Information Office, we put that in last April. And I think you can see from spending two days at Waukawasit yesterday, it's exactly what we're talking about. And that Center of Innovation is really sort of the seed of that, that Center of Excellence for Water Quality, although the Center of Excellence is more geared towards information. And that Living Laboratory is more for research that's water quality specific. And the Regional Information Office, it's all about that ability to control that information. The Canal Area Assessment and Transportation Improvement, that's about the bridges. You know, so we need to continue to sort of track that down. That is crucially important. The biggest barrier to traditional economic development activity on the Cape is the Cape Cod Canal. And we've got to be able to figure out what we're going to do, what the future of those bridges are going to be, because they control the future of, of the area. And then Waste Minimization, Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle, an increasingly important issue that we need to deal with. Patty's been doing a lot of work on the solid waste side of that. I think we're getting closer to a potential contract that, that we're regionalizing our aggregate buying power in order to negotiate that price. And on the other side of that, once you get the community set up for the next, you know, 10 plus years on that, on that solid waste side, I think we can use that as, as an area to move forward.
Before you leave the canal assessment and transportation, know that that's something that I feel is very important for us.
That's a large part of why it's there.
Well, the, the issue is, we have to figure out what, you know, where the, you know, the power nexus is, because locally, we get, you know, what I'd call an amiable, you know, reception. But there isn't anybody that is active in the Corps of Engineers at the local level that has any, you know, any power or authority to act. We need to figure out with, you know, with the support of our, of our congressional delegation, and, you know, both senators and, and Congressman Keating, to see whether we can get an audience or at least identify where, you know, where that power is within the Corps of Engineers and stop putting pressure on it. Because if we don't do it sooner, you know, we'll be having, you know, we've been having this conversation for several years.
Yeah.
And we still have not got what I'd call an identifying area where we can, you know, we can basically go to and say, these are the kinds of things we need to see in order to establish what I would call a contingency plan, a, you know, let's say, a forecast of what the replacement is going to be. Because they are not looking at any tie-in with the, you know, with the, with the connecting roads. They're just looking at the bridge itself. And we know, this is why we're studying this. We know that it, it's a holistic process that includes not only the element itself, but what contributes to the traffic on the island. So we have to keep, we have to, we have to find out where that is.
Well, we have been working with the Army Corps much more closely than we have been over the past year since this became part of the SEDS project. We sponsored a meeting a couple of months ago that involved Regional Transit Authority, Mass DOT, and Federal DOT, and the Army Corps. And the idea was to try to get money from the feds, Federal Department of Transportation, to study alternatives on the bridge. And although they were very interested on the local level, we were unsuccessful in being able to bite that off on the federal level. But that continues to move forward. What was, what's become clear to me over the last 12 months is that the Army Corps, I mean, they're about navigation, they're not about bridges. But they have a budget, and they take care of those bridges in almost a meticulous manner. So even though bridges for the Army Corps are at the bottom of their list of priority, they still take better care of those bridges than any other bridge that Commonwealth of Massachusetts supports. So it's, it's ironic almost. And it demonstrates the difference in economies of scales between a federal program and a state program. And that's what we're trying to deal with. But the question is, what's the future? And I think we only need 300,000 in order to get to the point where we have eliminated, you know, everybody talks about what the future of the bridges are going to be. The Army Corps, they can keep tightening the bolts and pouring concrete and fixing those revetments. They think they can go forever. Because they are structurally sound bridges, but they are operationally deficient. And so that's, that, and the Army Corps feels no obligation to address the operational insufficiencies. They're only concerned with structural sufficiency. So in order to address the operational insufficiency of the bridges, we have to engage the state and the feds in a different kind of discussion. And so that's what, what we hope to do. And it's an incredibly important piece of our transportation program.
I have one more.
Yeah.
Yesterday, the breakout session on water at which you spoke.
Yes.
Perry, I remember his last name.
Perry Hartswick.
Perry Hartswick from IBM. And we were talking about water, wastewater, infrastructure planning and all of that. But he used a phrase, I mentioned this this morning at the collaborative, cost of ownership.
Yes.
And I think that that is a basic principle that we should really keep in every single project that, that we do. Because so often, when we're, when we're dealing with projects, we always talk about design, build, maybe operate. But we never talk about the cost that it is to the owner. And the owners are different in every single project. Sometimes the owner is the homeowner. And sometimes it's a town, or it could be the county, or it could be, could be any, it could be an individual, or it could be a group. But I think to keep that, that basic thought or concept in everything we do, I think carries it to the end, if you will. I mean, it actually completes the, the project when you deal with the cost of ownership. And I just love that that's something we should not forget.
Thank you, Steve.
It's incredibly important. And oftentimes, it's, it's not taken up, for example, I sit on the State Water Infrastructure Committee. And what most of the rest of the state is dealing with is, is upgrading systems that they built in the 70s and 80s that they didn't maintain. They didn't have accurate numbers for the cost of ownership associated with that. Now, what we're dealing with down here, when we look at numbers that are as huge as the numbers are in dealing with our wastewater issues down here, is a conventional approach to build conventional gray infrastructure systems. And the cost of ownership of those systems is incredible over time. And frankly, in my opinion, unsustainable, and given the population and the population projections in most of these towns. So I mean, that's part of, when I say that we can't afford a $5 billion solution, that's part of what I'm saying, is we can't afford the cost of ownership. Even though you might be able to get $100 million appropriated at town meeting, that doesn't account for the cost of ownership. So we have to have a new paradigm and a new way to look at different strategies. And that's why I'm hopeful that the Cape will become, you know, a test bed, an area for innovation in water quality, and that the regulators will give us the opportunity to do that, to innovate down here. Because that's what the Cape does best, with 370 year history of, you know, farmers, fishermen, and entrepreneurs. And so, and, and this is a great test bed, given its sort of hydrogeology, too. So of course, we're going to have to expand systems where we have them. Centralized sewer systems are part of the answer, but they're certainly not the whole answer. And in part, it's because of that cost of ownership. But it also brings into, when you look at how you're going to pay for some of these structures, if we are only charging users to centralized collection systems, that cost of ownership is even more unbearable. And so it just, it continues to underscore the need to spread costs regionally in order to be, be able to have the flexibility to solve this problem at the lowest cost possible for everybody. So I agree with that. So just an example of some of the renewable energy, the Renewable Energy Generation Program really looked at how we can use offshore, well, what the appropriateness is for the state waters that, that we have. We've got 560 miles of coastline, two thirds of Massachusetts coastline. And so your DCPC process is in, in the middle of this right now. We should have some recommendations backed by the end of the summer, the policy committee's meeting this afternoon. And we've already identified, done a good job trying to identify appropriate scale for any potential development out there. But this, in conjunction with the land-based approach for standards, and that approach in state waters, and our participation on Beaumary, which is dealing with the federal waters, is allowing, at least from the commission's perspective, us to look at wind, alternative energy generation, wind, with the, looking at the entire continuum. And how much of this commercial scale power from wind is going to be produced in federal waters? What's the appropriateness of state waters? And what's the appropriate approach on land based? So that's been very productive going forward. And it's a good way to look at it. The Entrepreneurial Capital Access and Training, this is with, the Chamber has been the lead sponsor on this. And they've done a lot with Entrepreneurs' Weekend and their Connectivity Team Case Management. That was one of the announcements at the end of the, the summit yesterday, is that this ERS program has now been formalized. So that's another success for the SEDS. The Coastal Use Templates for Economic Development, this is an extensive mapping project currently that looks at the coastal economy, looking at natural resource extraction. The DCPC has a little overlap here. Today, we're going to be talking. has a little overlap here today. We're going to be talking about sand and gravel mining, for example. Marine Sciences and Technology Education, Transportation Utilities, Leisure and Hospitality, and Arts and Culture. So the nature of this really is to look at those areas where we have economic development related to coastal uses. We have a lot of harbors, working harbors. And in some of these harbors, there's not enough economic development activity. There's not enough access to the water to support our seasonal economy and to improve the quality of life for year-round residents. So we have to increase economic development activity in some of these working harbors and access. At the same time, we have to, to protect, you know, vast amounts of the coastal regions from additional impacts that would be negative or potential threats. So this ultimately will, will generate those hotspots where we need to work. So we looked at five working harbors. We looked at Woods Hole, Hyannis, Harwich, Chatham, and Provincetown. So we've done studies on all five of those harbors, and in particular, we followed up in Harwich. And this is an example of how a SEDS project led us to use other resources to marry them. We used DLTA money in the town of Harwich to do a plan for...
Secwatac.
Secwatac at Harbor, and we looked at Witchmere too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we've done sort of an analysis of how to lay that out better to improve how people can use that from an economic development perspective. So DLTA matching up with SEDS, leading to a particular project that is now complete in the town of Harwich. So the Buy Local Infrastructure Program, a lot of effort here from the county, Cooperative Extension, the Lower Cape CDP. So there's a lot of energy around this, and I think the next step is really to sort of develop this application. It has a huge upside on it, and it's being done in other parts of the country right now. The Economic Center Cost Analysis, this has been pushed by the Business Roundtable, and really what they want to be able to do is to answer the question of why it is less expensive to develop outside of economic centers, and more expensive to develop inside some of these traditional economic centers that we have. And, and to look at potential ways that we can, we can change that dynamic, so that it becomes less expensive to develop in economic centers. One of those approaches is our growth incentives, streamlining the regulatory process. But still, redevelopment is always going to be more expensive than greenfield development. It costs more to knock down a building than to knock down trees. And so what are other ways that we can sort of structure our land use strategy in order to get the development where we want it, where we have the adequate infrastructure to, to deal with?
I know of no other way of stopping sprawl.
Right. So this, this has been important to the Business Roundtable. Many components of it are already reflected in the regional policy plan. And, you know, mentioning the RPP, we're about two and a half years into this, it's going to be a five-year update. You know, I'm already starting to think about what that next update is going to look like. Because I think we made great strides away from a one-size-fits-all approach last time, but we can do much more to go to, to real impact-based regional planning and land use.
If I can just make a comment on the economic centers. You know, I remember with the regional policy plan, there was a lot of debate from traditional thought to looking at economic centers as the village centers, as the traditional village centers, and, you know, revitalizing those, building those up so that communities will sort of gather around them. And it also enhances that quality of life, because families can walk through the town, you have places for children to go, access to services for seniors where they can walk, and it decreases transportation. And, and it, you know, there was a lot of debate, like, well, what do you mean economic centers? You know, we have the industrial parks, and those are our real economic centers. And yesterday, the gentleman from Cisco was just basically saying, if that's the way you're thinking of bringing businesses in, these big businesses that are going to create these jobs in these economic centers, forget it. And he, you know, and he gave that example of Dublin Island was able to get, whatever the company was, it was a big company, international company, into there, and it was this, you know, big, you know, fanfare in their newspapers. And he said, and really, the people they brought, there were two people. Because all it was, was their headquarters, because they have a good tax base. But they were really spread all over the globe, and most companies are spread. You'd no longer have to have people driving to that, that, that office space, so to speak. So it was really just sort of an interesting look at how that, the traditional thought of economic growth has really changed, and you were, you know, you're sort of ahead of the, ahead of the curve there.
Well, the development of economic centers is at the heart of the regional policy plan. It is the biggest step away from a one-size-fits-all approach. And if you look at the history of land use, what happened, we had these traditional villages on the Cape. And then the highway system came in. And people migrated out of the traditional centers to suburbs. And business migrated out of traditional centers to strip malls and highway business zones. And that was sprawl.
Correct.
And so, and then you had malls that were inconsistent. So what we did is we zoned residential activity out of economic centers, our traditional main streets. We can't live there anymore. And it was inconsistent with the retail business strategies that grew up in malls. And so they, they...
We had to move this along.
Yeah, they underperformed. So what we're trying to do is bring that back in. The big way to bring it back in is to bring in the residential component, mixed use. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do in Hyannis. We permitted units down there. They're actually expanding. They're, they're building more units right behind the former Harry's down there now. That's working. We're bringing people back downtown. We need to do that. And then finally, this is Strategic Information Office. And these data points are part of what we showed at the presentation yesterday. But it shows you how much water quality information that we collect on the Cape, whether it's salt water, freshwater, drinking water. It's all over the place. But all of these different colored data sets go to different places now in different formats. We have to collect this all together. The collective value of this information is a completely untapped resource for the county. And then we have to put it together. So that's what we're working on with IBM. That was what was at the Smarter Cape Summit yesterday. And that's the end of our slideshow. So there you go. I stuck the landing.
I just, I just wanted to make one comment, and I did sort of make this statement to Paul, but I just just stated publicly that yesterday, what I thought, and you were talking about people coming together in the synergy, it wasn't as though one group tried to lead the summit. It was truly a collaborative effort. And I know that your goal was to reach out and to, and I, and I think that we, we, we did that ourselves as county commissioners with the Chamber and made that, that, you know, olive branch between county and Cape Cod Chamber. I think that you followed up on that very, very well. Everybody wants to sort of wear the hat of success, and yet there were four or five groups there that were in unison and were equal partners in that project yesterday. And I think that that's what really made it work so well. And nobody was trying to dominate or capture center stage. And because everybody had a stake in it, and it was an equal stake. And I thought that that was very well done. And congratulations. And your staff was great. And, and the staff that...
They made you look good.
And Teresa Martin did a great job.
That's what they're paid to do, right?
That's right. That's right.
They know.
But it was, it was really very, very well done. So congratulations to you and to all partners in that.
The summit yesterday, there was nobody in charge. This was a collaborative effort, and we mutually brought somebody in that we agreed on to staff it. It is a reflection of the same way we did the SEDS project. I mean, I hate to break it to people, but you know, collaboration is not that difficult. It's really not. It just requires a certain amount of trust and an honest conversation about where we're going and who's, what our role and responsibility is in moving forward. And if we open that up, collaboration is a lot easier, and we always wind up with better work products when we collaborate.
And you know, the governor came down and spoke about collaboration, and he was hoping that we were collaborating. And, and I was happy that Dave Schrofer did stand up and say, you know, you want to talk about collaboration, look at this room. Because if he had experienced those two days, he would have said, you guys get it more than anyone else in the state.
Well, the comment I would make on that is that Open Cape, Open Cape brought $40 million for what I think is the most important piece of economic development we've done in decades. The reason why their application was so readily accepted by the federal government is because it showed real collaboration.
It was.
They had real partners regionally. When broadband initiatives in the rest of the country are really about hooking up community colleges and school systems. And that's why we're ahead. That's why as a region, we will continue to lead if we can continue to collaborate. But we've got to overcome parochialism. And I think it is, if, if yesterday signaled anything, I think it's a paradigm shift. And it underscores the importance of the regional government that we have now. And, and you really need to take seriously trying to figure out through your strategic planning process what the regional government's going to be going forward, because there's an incredible unmet need out there. And there's a huge opportunity that we can't squander. I mean, and in order to do that, you have to demonstrate leadership. And the only way that, the biggest advantage Barnstable County has is you've got three elected commissioners who can demonstrate leadership. You know, COGS can't do that. They can't. They can help you buy pencils less expensively as a group of towns, but they can't provide leadership. You, you three can, and I hope that you do.
COGS are councils of government, just so people know.
Yes.
It's supposed to be regional government.
Yes.
But before you leave this subject, I want to make sure that while success has many parents, I think Teresa Martin deserves some...
Yes, she did a great job.
...acknowledgement. You know, Teresa Martin is of course also a member of the Assembly of Delegates, but she had the lead role as far as organizing and putting together. And I think that we should get, if we're handing out kudos for success, the fact that so many people were in the room had a lot to do with the hard work that...
Great, now she really pulled everybody together.
The four partners agreed on Teresa as the, as the person that would be the hull of this collaboration. And the fact that things went so smoothly over the last two days is really, you know, a testament to how hard she worked.
My observation to comment on the whole summit was that when you look at all of the organizations that were represented there, whether they were local, or whether they even came from out of...
Out of Cape.
Well, some off Cape. But I think what we saw was that, that the, that we were all moving in, in the direction that each organization planned to, planned to be in, and took a path that they, that they chose. But in the end, when we came to that one point, we were almost all at the same place. And, and that's the whole collaboration piece. And now then, and then when we define the next steps, and Open Cape is going to help move that information base off in many, many different directions, that we realize that to get to the next steps and to be really successful, we need Open Cape to help us get there. Whether it's education, whether it's commerce, whether it's tourism, whether it's the environment, energy, that we're really all together in that sense.
Right.
And that information is going to take us where we need to be.
We have a common goal.
Well, Open Cape's impact is going to be so ubiquitous that it's difficult to define, which is their challenge and one of the reasons for the summit yesterday. But just the collaboration piece, I mean, you all stepped up as commissioners when they needed help. You have a tremendous in-kind contribution in the lease that you gave them on the VCI building up there. That was a huge component of that grant application that went in and a reason for success. And when we knew it was going to take some time to rehab that, and they needed a place to stay at the Cape Cod Commission, like, well, we'll double up to make room for you. You know, collaboration is not that hard. It doesn't have to be bureaucratic. You know, collaboration is at its essence, common sense. And so the more that we, we use that, the better off we're going to be.
Amen to that. And I think that at that point, I think we ought to let you go back to work.
Yes.
I loved you.
Really great.
Thank you very much for...
Yeah, and get a nap in there somewhere.
Very, very...
And I also just, yeah, last night, everybody was at, the Cape Cod Commission reported to the town of...
Wellfleet.
Wellfleet, my hometown, so I happened to be there as well, and Roger Putnam. And, and Paul Pilcher, who is a delegate, is also now a selectman. So we were all there. And Patty also was very helpful in answering questions about solid waste. And maybe we'll talk about our, about the building inspector at some point, since that is, we don't have, it looks like we've run out of time for that.
Not today.
Not today. You know, you're on the exit. So yes, so then we will come back with that.
Thank you very much.
They did a great job last night.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.